Good evening. I want to welcome everybody to the March 23, 2020 regular meeting of the Palm Springs Planning Commission. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chair Elan?
I'm here.
Commissioner Irvin?
Here.
Commissioner Hertzfeld?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Maruzzi?
Here.
Vice Chair Roberts has not arrived. Chair Wermek?
Present.
We have a quorum. Six members present.
May I have a report of the posting of the agenda, please?
Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners, our agenda was posted on Thursday, March 17th. Our meeting has been posted in accordance with state law.
Thank you. Can I have an, is there a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. This, at this time is reserved for public comments. Members of the public may address the Planning Commission on Agenda Items and Items of General Interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Please note that we cannot take action on items that have not been posted. Each speaker will have three minutes. Testimony for public hearing may be offered at this time or the time of the hearing. Members of the public who would like to comment on Agenda Item 1A are directed to comment under this portion of the agenda. Is there a mem-, a member of the, can you open the public hearing and is there anyone who would like to comment?
It appears we have two members of the public on the meeting, so if either one of you would like to speak at this time, you can do so. You just unmute yourself and unmute yourself, but if you're here for the public hearings, you can speak at that time.
Both Pretty Faces and the Car Wash are public hearing items. There being no members of the public who wish to speak, the public hearing is closed. We will go to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to, the consent calendar is approval of the minutes of February 23, 2022. Can I have a motion to approve, Commissioner?
I have to be removed from that. I didn't attend that meeting. I'm not going to be voting on it.
I believe you did.
It says absent personally.
Oh, was this one of the first, this is?
Talking about the minutes, right?
Oh, you were absent from the final vote. Thank you. You are recused. Is there a motion and a second? Commissioner?
I'll move.
And Commissioner Irvin? You have your hand. Thank you. All in favor? Or can you call the roll, please?
Sorry, who was the second on this?
Commissioner Irvin.
Irvin, I believe you were absent also on that meeting. For the minutes?
You're right. You are correct. Sorry.
I will second the motion.
Got it. Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Elan?
Yes.
Commissioner Hertzfeld?
Yes.
And Commissioner? Chair Wermek?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Four zero.
Thank you. The next item before us is a public hearing. It's OLC 2020 LLC, Pretty, Doing Business as Pretty Faces. For a conditional use permit application for a nightclub cocktail lounge used located in an existing hotel at 105 South Indian Canyon Drive. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Okay, first I want to correct. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I believe the address is 150 South Indian Canyon Drive. My applicant, I'm so sorry. Let me just make this bigger. Okay. My applicant, Pretty Faces, is proposing a nightclub inside an existing hotel business, Hotel Zozo. As you can see from the yellow outline, that is where the nightclub will be proposed. It is surrounded by development well within the downtown area. And I did want to point out, the nearest apartment residential units are going to be highlighted in the spread square down below. I believe it's apartment 33. So the proposed use is going to be a, sorry, ignore the restaurant part, a nightclub, cocktail lounge and bar. These types of uses are permitted in the central business district with the approval of a CUP. You can see from the illustration on the right that the nightclub is entirely internal to the hotel. The reason they are applying for the conditional use permit is because they are not going to be part of the hotel any longer. So this area was used as a nightclub previously. It used to be Club Bardot in association with Hotel Soso and occasionally the Hard Rock Hotel. But now they're going to be completely separate entities, which is why the conditional use permit is required. This is a photo of the exterior of Hotel Soso. The main entrance, you could see, is right here to the hotel. However, the main entrance to the nightclub is actually located behind this green wall on the same face as the main building doors. This is the interior layout of the proposed nightclub. They'd enter here, walk around, and they'd have access to the bar and the dance floor and the VIP seats. So this nightclub and lounge has an occupancy for 258 people. They have their type 48 ABC liquor license and have made themselves available primarily to hotel guests. But of course, they are open to the public as well. They are proposing live entertainment such as drag shows or karaoke for bachelorette parties. Hours of operation will be Wednesday through Sunday, 8:00 PM to 2:00 AM. Upon entry, my applicant is proposing ID check, typical ID check, metal detector wands. They have a scanner to scan the IDs and pat downs when necessary. They are proposing a strict dress code. For example, like no open toe shoes or getting affiliated clothing will be permitted inside their nightclub. They are proposing 10 security cameras within the nightclub. Actually, I take that back. On the site plan that you, that you have, the security plan, it shows 10 security cameras. They're proposing an 11th one based on the suggestion of Sergeant Frank. They are going to have six security guards at one time, and they have underground parking not available to the public. It's valet only, and there's about 333 spaces that they show with the hotel. Here's a photo of their security plan. The yellow guys are the security guards, trained security guards. And we've got photos of where the cameras will be located throughout the property. That 11th camera is going to be placed somewhere here in the middle of the dance floor to have a 360 view of this entire area. They've conducted noise tests in the process of setting up this nightclub. They've conducted the noise tests primarily with the hotel, and they've tested from different areas of the hotel to make sure the guests aren't affected in any way. They are working with the police department to put together a security plan, which will need to be approved prior to them operating. We've met with Sergeant Frank, and we've walked the site, talked about staff training, security guards and surveillance. So I did want to emphasize that guests will not be gathering within the parking lot. There is no parking lot that's available to, to these guests. It's all valet. The depart-, the police department has issued a statement basically saying that there aren't any red flags with their proposed use, and they've given the okay to go through with the, with the nightclub. These are some photos of the front entrance. You could see it well behind this wall. This is the front door that all guests would walk through and be screened up. Front lobby with the hostess stand. And as you turn the corner to the right, you've got this aisle walking directly into the bar. It's pretty open. And then if you do a 180 turn, you've got access to the entire dance, dance floor and VIP seats. Staff would like to recommend approval subject to the conditions that are outlined in the staff report. The applicant is available for any questions that you have, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff? And Commissioner Hertzfeld?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. Do you know if they charge for parking?
I believe they do.
Okay, and so they've stated several things like how many security guards, et cetera. Is there any enforcement of that or, or do we check up on those kind of things or being adhered to?
So part of the security plan that they're working with the police department, I believe they'd have to adhere to that. That's part of the condition of approval, but as far as checking up, I'm not too sure if that's something staff does or if it's the police department that does that.
Or if it happens at all?
Correct.
And then?
Madam Chair, I would just add, in past nightclub operations, whenever there's been issues with the security guards, the police department has been the, the office to follow up with compliance with security plan issues. And usually PD is on top of that. So anytime there's been problems, that's what, that's really the document that staff would refer back to to ensure that they do have those numbers of security personnel onsite at all times as outlined in the security plan.
Thank, thank you. And then you said it doesn't have anything to do with the hotel. Do they, do they lea-, lease this space from the hotel operator or from a landlord? And the reason I'm asking is, has the operator of the hotel commented on this at all?
I know that they're working with the hotel, but they're not a part of it, and that probably is a little confusing. I want to say they own it completely, or they're leasing it completely from some, not from the hotel itself, but I'm sure the applicant can elaborate.
But to your knowledge, the hotel has not expressed a positive or a negative feeling about the project?
I would say that the hotel has expressed a positive feeling about the project. Majority of the guests for this nightclub should be from the hotel. That, that's what my applicants are anticipating.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure how you can make that statement, but anyway, okay, thank you.
Are there other questions? Commissioner Maruzzi?
Yes, how, how does this nightclub differ from the, the previous nightclub was there? Same number of occupants, the same liquor license, everything is pretty much the same. Is that, is that right?
Correct. That's, the only thing that's different is it's going to be, it's not owned by the hotel anymore. It's going to be separate owners.
Right, but other than that, in terms of just the mechanics of it, the music and all of that, all those things existed previously because I've been to that club. It looks exactly the same to me.
It, it is. It, nothing really has changed.
Alex, could you take the?
Yes, sorry.
This down so that we can see each other. Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks.
Are there other questions? Commissioner Irvin?
Just, just one more question. When the other casino, I mean, the other club was there, were there any incidents reported about loud noise or anything of that nature?
When I spoke to Sergeant Frank, he did not indicate that there were any issues.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Chair Wermek, I do have one question. I just want to confirm that the hours of operation proposed for the new nightclub are the same as the hours of operation for the previous operator?
That I do not have an answer to. I apologize.
Okay, I'll check with the applicant.
Can, and can you research that, please, for us while we're waiting? I have a couple of questions, and they, they're not as much about the club, but we've just had two gun, gun shootings right near that on Arenas and Indian Canyon. We've also had some on Palm Canyon recently, and we've gotten a lot of testimony about fights in parking lots and street corners when people spill out at 2:00 in the morning. So question for Mr. Priest? If he's here. This, the worry I have isn't this nightclub. It's the, the perception that we're becoming a dangerous neighborhood with gun battles at 2:00 in the morning. Is there in any require, any way that we can require any facility that stays open past 12 to provide for a sort of a community security service, a merchant security, a club security service? I'm, I'm concerned that there's no patrolling of the streets except for our police department. And, and if the businesses that are involved are not outside as well as inside, we are going to have more incidents.
Madam Chair, I might be able to address that if Mr. Priest is unavailable. So the city does not have a merchant organized security patrol currently. So that's something that, you know, would require input and buy-in from the merchants in the, the area or district. One thing that we might consider doing with this applicant is, as a part of a security plan, ensuring that attendees to the nightclub are, as, as they are directed away from the business, that security personnel along, as the crowds move out of the nightclub, also move out with the guests to ensure that outside of the nightclub, they, you know, they're not gathering or becoming problematic. And that's probably the most that we can do unless there's a greater effort desired by the merchants to establish an, an organized district for security.
And we can probably, as we deal with that, also refer the city council as a concern and ask them to take it up. I just, I, I don't have a problem with the specific application. I have a, a problem with what's happening in, with the crime level that's been increasing in the neighborhood. I have a, a problem with what's happening in, with the, uh, crime level that's been increasing in the neighborhood. Um, and the perception of us, uh, as a city. We don't need another Zeldas. Uh, are there other, uh, other comments before we open the public hearing? And I was wondering if staff had been able to answer yet the question about what the previous hours were of the previous applicant.
Just doing some research online, I saw, um, one website that showed how they had hours from nine PM to two AM on Fridays and Saturdays only.
And this applicant is asking for?
Eight, eight PM to two AM, Wednesday through Saturday night or Sunday.
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 Hey, uh, if there are no more, Commissioner Irvin, you have your hand up.
No, no, I didn't. I'm, I'm okay.
Okay, um, if there are no more questions of staff, can we open the public hearing, please? The applicant will have ten minutes to address us.
Okay. Hi, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Tyler Kaden. I'm working with Michael Murphy on opening, uh, the new club, Pretty Faces at Hotel Zoso. Um, and I just wanted to tell you guys, uh, one of the things you were asking about is the hotel, um, you know, working with us on or have any opinion on us opening, uh, the nightclub. Uh, we are renting the space from the owners, the new owners of the hotel. Uh, but we are working really close with Columbia Management and they are really excited for us to open the club. Uh, and they see it is going to be a really big benefit to them for booking out the hotel. And, um, for bringing in, they have a huge convention space downstairs, if you're aware. Um, and this is going to be really helpful to helping them sell the convention state space. And, uh, we're really gearing the hotel to be, uh, for, I mean, the nightclub really for the, uh, guests staying at the hotel. And that's our primary, uh, customer, is the guests coming in, uh, and staying in the hotel rooms. And, uh, go ahead.
Your presentation?
Sorry, yeah, I, I didn't know if you guys had any more questions for me. Um, I could keep going. It's, and if for the other concerns for the security issues, um, we do have, uh, our security plan, which you guys saw. We will have six security guards onsite. Um, we did work with the police. Um, I also sent him and Alex our full security plan already. Uh, everything that he requested, uh, to be in there, including, um, uh, active shooter issues and other things is all in the security plan already and they have that as well. Bart Lounge, yeah. And, uh, Michael Murphy, who's the owner, is also the owner of Bart Lounge in Cathedral City, um, which we've had no issues with security issues. We've had no problems. Um, we have, uh, we have the most successful Latin, uh, night with no problems on Sundays there. Uh, we work really close with our security guards. I help them do the security plan there as well. Uh, where we don't allow anyone in with hats or bandanas. We check everybody at the door. We pack customers down when we feel necessary. We also have a wand if we feel we need to, uh, wave somebody down or check their bags, we do so. Um, so we, we're very active in making sure that we have a safe environment for our customers and a safe environment for our employees as well. And yeah, we're, we're going to be doing all the same things over at, uh, Pretty Faces nightclub with additional security, more security than we have over at Bart at the moment.
Thank you. Uh, we'll come back to you for questions.
Sure.
Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? Mr. Newell, has anyone indicated an interest in speaking?
No other requests, Madam Chair.
So we'll come back to you, not for rebuttal, but for questions from the, the, um, commission? Are there commissioners who have questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for your testimony. The public hearing is closed. This matter is before the commission. Um, general comments and then motions? Uh, Commissioner, Vice Chair Roberts, welcome.
Hi, thank you all. Um, I'm, I don't see an issue with this. They, they have consistently operated some sort of a nightclub or an event space uh, within the lobby. It doesn't seem to have been a problem in the past and that it's in the middle of their lobby, which is sort of buried in the middle of the building. Um, this doesn't seem to be offering anything different than what they've ever had. So I don't really see an issue with it.
Any other comments, Commissioner Marusi?
Yeah, I, I agree. Uh, it's, if there was anything substantive that was different between these two, it hasn't been raised. So I, I don't see any reason why we would not approve this. It would, it'd seem, well, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't. If anything, I would make a motion that we do approve it.
I'd second that.
I would like to make some amendments to that if you're doing that. One is, I think they need to add security to follow the patrons out at night. Um, that what we want is a, uh, is safe streets as people are exiting.
How do you follow them out at night? What does that mean?
I want the, you have security in the building. You have no security out of the building as people are leaving at two in the morning.
Would you define that? Do you mean a security guard at the door when they're walking out?
A security guard at the parking lot, a security guard at the door.
They don't have a parking lot.
That, well, are they using city parking? We've been having fights in the city parking lot.
They're parking wherever they can. They, they only have a driveway. They don't have parking.
We have, we have, we're valet only, so the, all, everybody coming to the nightclub, most of the guests will most likely be staying in the hotel. Um, so they will just be going back to their rooms. Uh, but people, uh, people that are coming will have to valet. And so when people exit the club, we do have a guard that is roaming, uh, who does check, uh, check the, he will check downstairs, check the parking, uh, the valet parking garage at times, just for people that may be vagrants walking around. But when people leave the nightclub, there will be a security guard, uh, out front. We have one that's gonna be out front that's maintaining the line, and then he can also make sure people are going straight to valet or leaving the property promptly. Uh, because it's the front of the hotel, um, the hotel and us will be working together to make sure people aren't blocking that area because it is an active driveway. So we need, uh, we need, you know, cars to be able to pull in. People need to get in their vehicles and leave as soon as our car comes up.
Um.
I, I have a co- comment. Uh, I, I, I'm not sure what the legality is of having a security guard hired by the nightclub, uh, providing any kind of security uh, intervention o- off the property.
I share that concern. Um, again, what happens out on the street, happens out on the street. They're really only responsible for what happens in their building. Um, their, their, their security guard could, um, they, they have a garage under the hotel where they valet. Um, I don't know if guests are allowed to self-park there. That's an important question. Um, Mr. Kaden, do you know?
They are not.
They're not. So it's valet only. So people are going to be standing at the driveway or walking anywhere they park, which could be anywhere. So other than having a security guard at the door, I don't see how we can really enforce on the city streets.
I think having a security guard on the city street, uh, and at the door, I don't know if that's in the security plan. I would like to see that in the security plan.
There is one on the security plan that I provided, the, uh, the planning commission, there is a se-
But Madam Chair, what we might do is, uh, just elaborate on the security plan to have security, uh, ensure patrons are not loitering and also to assist with crowd management onsite so that it's, any issues are onsite, they're dealt with.
Thank you. Um, I, I have no objections to the motion, but I want to speak to something after the motion. Um, after we vote.
So I'm sorry, I just need clarity. Since I seconded this, did we motion, is the motion to approve as presented?
It is.
No. So you will not accept an, an amendment that has, that makes sure that there's, that their security plan includes the items that Mr. Newell mentioned.
But it's, it's already in their security plan.
In there, we're approving that.
Is it in there, Mr. Newell?
It's, they show security guards on their plan, but I think if you wanted to add language to the conditions to address loitering and crowd management onsite, we could do that if the commission desires.
Um, isn't that, I'm sorry, isn't that the whole point of having a security guard there? Is to watch for, I mean, aren't we kind of being redundant here? They're hiring a security guard for crowd control and loitering and all of those issues, right? Or if they have problems in their space.
You weren't here, Mr., um, Vice Chair, uh, but they did, most of their security is internal.
Yeah.
Sure that it's peaceful inside the club. This is just to elaborate, to make sure that as people spill out, there isn't loitering.
I fully understand that. I just don't think we can control it once they leave the driveway.
If, if you go back to the security plan, I know you probably can't see it, but the security plan that they drew up shows three, two, two people at the door, one inside the door, one outside the door. And then one person appears to be in the covered port crochere area as well, so.
It does show all three of them.
Yeah, three of them, uh, that would be available for that purpose, uh, Chair.
Fine, if it's there, it's there. I, um, I will call the motion, but I want to raise something else after we, after we vote on this.
Commissioner Marusi?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner, uh, Vice Chair Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Alain?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hershman?
Can, can I just confirm that we're voting to approve the staff recommendations as well?
Yes.
Okay, then, then, then yes.
Uh, Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Chair Womack?
Yes.
Question is approved, seven zero.
Uh, the, the issue I wanted to send to city council is just that we have had issues before us in the last two meetings of fighting in the parking lots at two AM, of fights on the streets and recently gun violence within a block of this area. And I'd like this, and I don't know that this should be entirely a police matter. Uh, and I wanted just to refer it to the city council and hope that they think through ways that they can take action to, uh, safeguard our city and safeguard our reputation. Does anybody have a problem with us sending that along? I have no problem with the applicant, but I have a concern about this issue.
That's fine. I, it's a bigger issue and it should be taken up if we are having enforcement problems. Um, but you're right, it's not really ours.
It's not ours.
I, I'd like to suggest that that statement also include something about, uh, encouraging uh, the council to, um, incentivize the, the local business community to create some sort of uh, merchant patrol project.
That's fine with me. Uh, can I just get a sense of the body in terms of, uh, eyes or nose to this? Um.
I think that's fine.
I think you've made a statement. I don't think we need to vote on it. I don't think anybody's against it. Can we move to the next issue?
Yes. And, uh, please, I'm still Chair until I turn it over to you.
You could be, I think you can be Chair perfectly, forever.
Um, actually, I'm, uh, for people who don't know, I'm in a, uh, rehab facility and I think it would be better because people may walk in and out of this room while I'm chairing if, um, Vice Chair, if, if the Vice Chair would take over the meeting at this point.
Okay, um, so item two B, uh, um, so we're voted and done on the last issue. Um, item two B is, uh, George Joseph doing business at Palm Springs Car Wash for an amendment to a conditional use permit to alter the hours for off-premise alcohol sales in a retail store located in section fourteen at three hundred North Indian Canyon Drive, Zone REO, case five one four six one, conditional use permit. Can we please have a staff report?
Okay. So the applicant, George Joseph, is just amending their original conditional use permit to change the hours from six AM to twelve AM to six AM to two AM. So they're increasing their hours by two. Um, this is the, the, the site plan. Um, their retail store is highlighted in green. They've got gas pumps, a car wash and their little, um, liquor store inside or convenience store inside. This is what the store looks like on the outside. Um, there is a window, you could see right here um, where the applicant will be serving whatever, I'm sorry. They'll, they'll be serving, um, through that glass window past twelve, past midnight, so, uh, members of the public will not be able to go into the store past midnight. Um, it'll be handed to them from that window. Well, this is just other areas of the parking lot. This is what the retail store looks like inside. They got the cash register right here next to the window where, um, drinks could be handed to, to prevent, uh, people entering the building past midnight. These are the types of, uh, alcohol that are served within the store as well as other beverages and food. And, uh, you can see the window is right there. Um, so they're not required to have a security plan, but they are required to have security. Um, and the business has agreed to maintain video surveillance on their premises and they are actually hiring onsite, um, security for, uh, twenty-four seven on call in case any issues arise. Um, the conclusion is that staff approve this subject to the previous conditions, uh, conditions of approval for the original CUP, yeah, also including, um, these conditions that you see on the screen as well. That concludes my report and the applicant is available for comment.
Questions for staff, Chair Womack?
Yeah, uh, Alex, you said serving drinks. I thought they were selling bottles of alcohol, closed bottles of alcohol. Can you please, uh, let us know which, which it is?
Sorry, that was my mistake. They are, um, they are not serving open beverages. It would just be the bottles that they have, closed beverages, off-site, um, consumption.
And the second question was that it said that they had, uh, somebody, a patrol that came by twice a night. Are they intending on increasing that infrequent patrol with, uh, with the extension of hours?
No, I believe that the, uh, security will just be available for on-call, um, but we can definitely ask the applicant that.
I have no more questions.
Any other questions? Uh, Commissioner Hershman?
Could you put the slide up again that shows the front of the building?
Yes, give me one second. Share my screen. Sure. There you go.
Did they get a sign permit for that sign?
I can double check for you.
Any other questions of staff?
Uh, yes, I have a question.
Please speak up.
Um, I'm curious about, you, you mentioned that they have, uh, on-call security. I'm curious about what the response time is and how frequently that, uh, calls are actually made to have, uh, security respond to the premises. to have security respond to the premises now.
And Alex, can you clear the screen, please? Thank you. So Commissioner Olean, was that sent, a focus to staff?
Yes, that question is for staff.
So, don't. Sorry, I don't have an answer for response time, but the Police Department Lieutenant Etressen did say that they are fine with the extension of the hours and aside from homelessness, there aren't any other issues with this area.
Thank you.
Other questions? I have a few questions myself, and I'm sorry I didn't forward these questions to you earlier. Is this an anomaly in any way? Do we have other examples of gas stations that are just selling booze out of a window all night? Are they all doing that, that serve, that sell during the day? That sell packaged goods like this, or, and again, I know this, I'm throwing this at you last minute.
I would have to do research on that, I apologize.
Yeah, I just want to know if this is an anomaly in any way. I also think that we need to, I know that there are, when I was on City Council, we always were looking at the numbers of liquor stores that were open at this hour. We were looking at saturation levels and I think we should look at the saturation level of this. Did staff look at that in any way? In terms of how many other stores are selling liquor until two within proximity to this particular location?
I have not.
Okay. David, is this something you, you guys have looked at in the past when you're bringing these before the Planning Commission? Or are we just taking them, we're not considering saturation?
Yeah, so it's something that we do typically look at for a new establishment. Because this is one of the existing establishments that's only modifying its hours, we, we didn't look into the saturation issue.
That actually makes a lot of sense. I, I do, when the applicant comes, I, we clearly have a number of questions about on-call security and what that really means. Any other questions of staff?
Yeah, I just, I still think the saturation issue is important, so I'd like that question answered. If we can have that question answered by staff while we, the public hearing is open.
So you want to know within a certain diameter, how many
Yes.
places are serving alcohol? And serving, or selling packaged good, off-site alcohol?
Selling packaged goods off-site, we're extending from midnight to 2:00 AM. And I, I kind of want to know what else is happening like that in the city.
Okay. Other questions of staff right now? I'd like to invite the applicant to answer the questions you've already heard. And you have up to ten minutes to present to us if you like. You don't have to. And please start now. Mr. Joseph?
Yes, I am here. Hope all you guys are well.
Mr. Joseph, you have up to ten minutes if you want it. You don't have to. Did you hear the previous questions from the Commission?
Yes, I have. I can answer the security.
Thank you.
Security goes around twice a night and on-call during the day. And at night, when we call him, it ranges, and depends on how many calls he's got. Normally runs from twenty to thirty minutes sometimes. We close the window because we try to keep the site clean and we don't want any beer runs and people stealing stuff and running with it. We don't like the confrontation with some of the homelessness that we got. And we have been successful of keeping a clean site. Since I started the selling beer and wine and liquor in there, I kept it meticulous, clean. And we have no problem with, even the homelessness are there, that we take care of them in a, in a way that we don't call the cops many times. That's why when it went in the front of the Police Department, they had no objection to what we're doing due to what we have been doing in the past, keeping it clean. Any other questions?
Well, Mr. Joseph, on clarity on the first question, so you're saying that your security patrol just goes by the establishment twice, from what hours to what hours?
Different, different times. He just passes by, make sure that no homelessness, no trouble. But if we do need him, we call him, he comes back. They're mainly, they're, they're basically in the downtown area, Palm Springs side, the north side of, of us. It's Maxwell Security. They're a very reputable company and they do a good job.
So they're doing drive-bys for you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Other questions of the applicant?
I'm curious if applicant can tell us how frequently they do need to call for service.
Mr. Joseph?
We have been lucky. You know, once every couple of weeks or something, we haven't had a lot of problem. We keeping it, we keeping the homeless off the side. We don't have a lot of problem. And when they do come in, we take care of them, so we're giving them whatever they need and we, we have no problem so far.
Commissioner, did that, did that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Other questions of the applicant? Okay. I'd like to open, this is a public hearing, I'd like to open a public comment on this particular agenda item. If you have questions, please identify yourself and speak up if there's anybody. I will now close the public comment and bring it back to the Commission for comment and action. Comment? Commissioner Olean, I think you're pregnant with a, with a comment.
I can start. I can start. I, I am concerned about this and it's not a slam dunk for me because of the, as several Commissioners have noted, the number of incidents we've had in downtown Palm Springs just recently involving shootings, involving crime, that seems to be, seems just around alcohol consumption and seems to happen between twelve and, and two. Unlike the previous application, I believe that this is different. It is different if you go buy a six-pack of beer or, or a bottle and you're left to consume it on your own. You might not have the same judgment or the same interest in limiting your consumption and maintaining a sense of sobriety as a bartender would whose livelihood arguably depends on their preventing people from over-consumption. And I am concerned, a twenty to thirty minute response time to me at one-thirty AM when you need help is not sufficient. And I'm hopeful that maybe with the Commissioners, other Commissioners' suggestions or with additional thought by the applicant, that they can come up with something that would assure a more timely response or somehow limit the extension of hours so that people are not left on their own with a six-pack and a, and a bottle or two between noon, excuse me, between midnight and 2:00 AM when arguably decision-making is not as good as it is when you're sober and in the light of day.
Thank you. Other comments? Commissioner Maruzi?
Well, I would have hoped that the Police Department would have considered those questions when they came up with their conclusion that they approved and they didn't have any objection to the additional hours. So I, I would defer to them, although I understand your point, but I, I would defer to the Police Department.
Chair Womack, is your hand up?
Yes.
Yeah.
I have the same concerns Commissioner Olean does in terms of response time and I'm also concerned that we didn't get any saturation information from staff. I'd like, I'd actually like to hold this until we get information from staff as to how many of these facilities there are. And, and I'm concerned, you know, I'm not sure, I haven't seen any arguments as to why that we should be extending liquor sales from twelve till two in the morning on a drive-through basis.
Well, I'm.
I don't know what else we do, so not having that information in, in, from staff, I don't feel like I have enough basis to make this decision.
I agree that it would help to have some information about how many other locations are within a certain amount or saturation level. But more importantly, are most establishments that are selling packaged goods selling until 2:00 AM? And I don't know the answer to that. It would be helpful to know that. I, I, I don't think the issue of whether these places in general should be serving until two is really an issue, but I, for us. But I think it's an important issue to be discussed. I definitely have thoughts about it. And it would be helpful to have input from the, input from the police about the crime levels that occur at different intervals, intervals of the night and whether we should be considering reducing the hours of package sales. But again, this is a much bigger conversation than, than this applicant just simply extend, extending for, for two more hours. But if the Commission wants to get some more information about how many other package stores exist between twelve and two and if we're creating an anomaly by allowing it, or if it's very common, I think we should know that. I, I would support that request. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Irvin, you have your hand up, or is that from before?
Yeah, I, I have my hand up. For me, it, it sounds like the Police Department signed off on this. So, I mean, we could try to see what we can do to, to dictate that and kind of can, control the, that late night, but as long as the police are, are saying that it's fine, it's, it's kind of, I, I don't know, I'm just, if, if the police have done their research and said that it's okay, I think it's just our job to, to look, look at it and take it for face value, not go into detail about how. And then first, you know, basically we would have to, all the other applicants that we're getting for the same situation would have to, you know, look at, at the criminal backgrounds for that area. You know, it, it's terrible that we happen to have two shootings recently. But, but, you know, I, I don't feel comfortable making my decision on something that happened with, with the shooting downtown and, and just, you know, take that and make that as the normal. So I, I don't know, that's just my opinion.
I, I have, I just want to say I agree with you. I don't think we can make an example of, of one liquor store trying to extend for two hours based on what happened a number of blocks away, but the, staff, police did sign off this, sign off on this?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Other comments from Planning Commission?
Actually, I would like to extend this for, to make a motion to extend it for two weeks to get the information. I, I don't have an issue with this applicant. I'm just concerned that we don't know what we're doing. And I, and, and that there's not planning involved in this and and even if we approve this applicant, we can at least send some concerns to the City Council to take a look at it, but I, I'm concerned about lack of understanding what's happening in our city.
I will support that. I think it's a good idea. If that's a motion, I'll second it.
Yes.
Continue this to our next meeting for staff to pull some information for us on saturation levels within maybe a two-block radius and give us the hours of those businesses selling packaged goods. Please give us the hours and days that those businesses are, are in operation. Other amendments or questions to this or comments? Mr. Noel?
Just going to say, during the conversation, I was able to pull up some data that might be helpful for the Commission relative to, to off-sale licenses in the area.
That'll be helpful. Thank you.
So this is a map showing the location here on Amado Road and Indian Canyon Drive. This box here is a tract.
We can't see, there's no, can you make your pointer clearer?
So there's a census tract, it's within Census Tract nine four one four dot zero zero, which is bounded by Alejo Road, Sunrise Way, Ramon Road, and Indian Canyon. Within this Census Tract, there are four licenses. One for the Ralph's Grocery on Sunrise, the other for CBS in the same center. The other for Rite Aid on South Sunrise Way and Topwitz. And then the proposed, or the subject business. So there's four active licenses within that Census Tract.
Mr. Noel, do you have the hours of operation for the top three on this list?
I, I don't have the specific hours for these right now, but we can get that up.
Could you go back, could you go back to the map for a minute?
Yes.
So I mean, he's right on the border of the Census Tract and he's very close to Alejo. What about the adjacent tracks?
So the adjacent track which extends from Ramon Road to the south and goes much further north is Census Tract zero four four six dot zero six. Zero four four six dot zero six has also four liquor license, off, off-premise liquor license, active off-retail licenses. Rite Aid on South Palm Canyon. Los Palmas Liquor at fifteen ninety-five North Palm Canyon. Seven-Eleven on twenty-four ninety-three North Palm Canyon. And then Hyphen, which is a recently approved business that the Commission granted.
And Hyphen's a daytime business.
Yeah, and that's more of a daytime business.
And then the, the other, the other Census Tract close to them?
I would, oh.
So this is the Census Tract I was just reading.
Yeah, the one. The one just to the north.
This one here?
Yeah.
While he's doing that, I'd like to point out that the Seven-Eleven in that previous Census Tract is open twenty-four seven. And the Los Palmas Liquor is open till eleven PM, but on Friday and Saturday, twelve AM.
You mean for, for their package sales of alcohol?
Just their store hours in general.
Okay.
And, and on the, the previous one also, the CVS, I looked that up, it looks like it closes at twelve and eleven, I mean, eleven PM during the week and I think twelve, I mean, twelve AM on Saturdays and Sundays.
But we don't, on, on the first number of stores, we don't have their operation hours or their package sales hours. Unless staff can produce that, I stand by our motion.
And I stand by, I think I stand by my motion, yeah.
Any issue with that, staff, coming back in a few weeks with the, the operation hours? Why don't you give us, why don't you give us the statistics for operation hours for package sales in all four districts around this one?
So I'm clear, the, the, there's really, it looks like three that are adjacent to it. It's this, the one, the first one we looked at. This one here, and then the third one, which I just looked up, there's no off-sale retail licenses here.
Oh, there's none in the one to the north. How about the south?
So in this one, yeah, there's the, the four we talked about, and in this one, there's the four.
I'm, I'm sorry, to the south of that one?
This one here?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can look that up. And bring that to you.
So, so my motion was to continue and get this information.
There, there was another question that, uh, Vice Chair Roberts had, which I felt kind of interesting, which was that, do we have any, uh, package sales in this sort of, um, uh, gas station adjacent sort of configuration and if we do, anywhere in the city and if we do, what those hours are?
I'm not sure. Is, are you referring to the manner in which the sales are occurring after twelve?
I'm referring to, um, selling packaged alcohol beverages, uh, on, with essentially a ga-, a gas station premises.
So, Mr. Newell, I think what we're, the, I think what I'm hearing from my colleagues is we're trying to find out if we're creating an anomaly here and if so, that could be an issue.
Okay.
I'm not under precedent. So any information you can gather about that and also, um, I don't know if in the general plan there are saturation limitations. Again, he's already selling until midnight, so, um, I, that argument probably doesn't hold much water since he's only extending for two hours. But let's find out who is selling packaged goods until two AM and, um, who they are specifically. Any other questions or comments for staff on this issue? Um, we have a motion, we have a second. Staff, would you take your role on this, please?
Wermick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Layan?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Commissioner Hirschman?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
And Commissioner Marosi?
Yes.
Motion is approved to continue to date certain of April thirteenth, seven to zero.
Uh, thank you for that. Uh, we're moving on to our next item, which is unfinished business. Uh, it doesn't seem that we have any um, new business. We don't have any. Um, Planning Commission reports, requests, comments, ideas? Yes, uh, Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, I just have a, a question for David. Um, did the Mesa houses that we had denied go to council on appeal yet? And if so, what was the outcome?
So the two houses, uh, in the Mesa, the houses located, proposed on Crestview have been appealed. Those have not been, um, they're not on the upcoming agenda, which is to, tomorrow. Uh, but they, we do anticipate that they'll be on the April seventh city council meeting agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
And, uh, what is on tomorrow's agenda? There, there isn't an appeal, but there's an approval of the eight houses off of, I think, close to Radio Road and Farrell. Is that correct?
The eight houses on Radio Road?
Uh, there were eight houses. I think they, council approves the house, the four houses on Sunrise where we converted from Trailer Park to.
Yeah, sorry, that, they did approve the Modlin Homes change of zone at the last meeting.
And is there a change of zone on this commission, this city council agenda?
Correct. So the, um, AG Land Investments, General Plan Amendment, Zone Change, eight lot subdivision on, on Alejo is scheduled for hearing tomorrow night with the council.
Um, any other questions or, or reports, please?
Does the city council still, uh, request updates on projects that have been lingering? For example, the Dream or the one that's, you know, across from the, the Fountain, et cetera?
Um, that's, I, I think they still do, but I haven't seen a recent u-, update on that. Um, so not recently, no.
What's, what's the, the, the name of the, the one that crossed from the Fountain?
Lawrence Rail originally.
Yeah, Lawrence Rail. I saw at least three people working there for the last month. I don't know if that qualifies as progress.
To my knowledge, it, it has started back up with a new contractor. And remember that we approved another whole piece of it.
I remember that.
To my understanding, we are, we are back up and running on that project. The Dream, unfortunately, I think has become a mem-, there's a new hotel called The Memory, meaning it will never happen.
Well, yeah, I'd like to, that's probably the case. I'd like to know for sure. Uh, are they gonna fill in the pit at some point? I mean, is it gonna remain fenced off forever? I'd like to know those kinds of things.
You know, I think it's fine for us to ask, um, status on any of these. If you all want to name, um, projects that you have, uh, that you'd like to status up to, date on, staff could bring that to us next time.
Yeah, I mean, the one that, the, the former, former rail, my comment was that there are, there are people working there, but not very many. So I don't, they can claim that they're, you know, doing work on it and have three people working there. I'd like to know if they have a full complement of, of contractors. It's, it's a lot of work to be done in that place and it's not just something that a, a handful of, uh, workers can deal with.
Mr. Newell, do you just get us a full status on that?
Yes, yes.
And can we add the orchard tree to that list?
Yes, please.
We will be getting a request to extend the entitlement very soon.
Oh, my God.
So they are working through the, um, specific, specifics for the operation and, uh, uh, looks looking like some design changes. Um, but they will be requesting an extension of the entitlement.
Mr. Newell, what about the project right next to Rick's Cafe, uh, way up on, uh, uh, north of Vista Chino? Um, didn't we take down the skeleton? Is there any update on that parcel?
Um, no new updates beyond the, the structure being removed from the site. We've had talks with potential buyers of it, but, um, I'm not certain as to where the, the ownership is on that right now with moving a project forward, but it could look like a promising site for possible housing, which would be great and potentially something along the front edge that might be, that might work well on North Palm Canyon, but nothing formal has been submitted.
What about the, the, uh, uh, downtown condo project, um, the, uh, great project?
The, yeah, the block B one, the former Virgin Hotel site?
Yep.
That's, that's in plan check.
That's implied check. Um, Mr. Newell, the property, um, that the Planning Commission looked at, um, I think it's the Casa de Flores where Oscars is. Um, is there any movement on that particular project with respect to a change of use for hotel?
Yeah, there's been an approval, um, to allow that location to be converted to a hotel um, from planning, but I'm not sure where they're at with the building department in terms of moving forward with an actual permit.
So it is approved for a hotel use right now?
It, yes, hotels are by right uses in CBD, so that was one that was administratively approved.
Okay, and does he have an approved plan for that hotel? Uh, I know there was issues with the exterior wall area, but the, is the hotel itself approved?
I believe it was, but I would have to look back at, at the records to just confirm that, but they would have to go through a change of use request with the city. I don't, I just don't know what the status is of that.
Okay.
Mr. Newell, one question is maybe just a comprehensive report on those projects that we've previously approved that, uh, have gone through plan check or have, you know, established their entitlements versus those that haven't. Uh, I know near me there is a, uh, RV self-storage that I, it's been sort of standing there with a water tank for five or six years. What, it'd be interesting and important to know whether they actually have an entitlement or they don't, and I think it'd be good to know that for the projects that we've dealt, for all the projects that we've dealt with.
And the process, the project across from Cody Place on South Palm Canyon. I see the trucks pushing dirt around, but they've been doing that for some time. I'd like to know when they're actually gonna co-, construct some houses.
And Mr. Newell, you don't have to do all that right now, but perhaps bring it back at our next meeting?
I have a list of projects, so if I've missed, if there's one that was discussed that you would like me to give you an update on, please shoot me an email and I'll do my best to get all that.
I was just gonna say, if we could, if we could send in our notes on that, I think that would be great. Um, Mr. Newell, do you have a report for us tonight?
Yeah, just a brief update. Um, at the last city council meeting on March tenth, uh, as, as I mentioned, the Modlin Homes change of zone on Sunrise Way in Sunny Dunes. The, uh, subdivision that the commission reviewed, uh, for four lots, it was a change of zone as well, to be consistent with the general plan, was approved. So the council did approve that. There certainly was comments and questions about whether that was appropriate given our, our need to have more units in the city and, uh, lack of available housing, so. Um, it was approved though, so I just wanted to give the commission an update about that. Uh, the other item that pertains to the commission is, that was on their agenda at the last meeting was the vision and priority statements from the general plan update. And so we've got, um, some additional direction from council on that, so the council has requested that we, uh, make some additional changes to the vision and priorities, which we will bring back to them. And of course, once that is finally, um, has been blessed by council, we will, uh, provide the commission a copy of that as well. And those are the only updates I have.
Thank you. Um, I, I, um, Mr. Newell, are we setting a new record? Um, being done at six forty-two?
Yes, before the sun went down, it's just some light out in the wind. I see some light outside, so it's a record.
Yeah, Wermick shaking her head. Did, did, have we closed sooner than that?
I think we have once in, uh, in the many years that I've been on the commission.
Chair Wermick, it is so wonderful to see you up and with us. So, um, thank you all. Um, I'm gonna move adjournment.
Before we adjourn, can I say two things? I just wanted to congratulate Commissioner Irvin on the effort he's making to take uh, young people from Palm Springs, uh, to, to look at colleges and, uh, and get a stronger sense of themselves uh, and their opportunities. I think the work he's doing is tremendous. And.
And.
And also for a vice, for a vice chair, I want to compliment you on a really successful event at the Plaza last weekend, which proves that we need the theater.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Um, any more comments or love?
I, I just want to tell Chair thank you. Um, we're taking, uh, twenty-four students from the ages of ninth grade to twelfth grade. Palm Springs Unified School District, uh, is taking students. Um, and we'll be, uh, visiting a couple of colleges, uh, four colleges in Washington DC. And the trip will be six days and, um, the students didn't have to pay anything. Uh, in return, we had the students, uh, write some essays about why they wanted to go on the trip. And we ended up getting, it was only supposed to be like a couple paragraphs. Some of the students sent us three-page reports, uh, I mean, three pa-, three-page answers on why they wanted to go to the trip. So the kids were excited and, uh, we're just happy to be able to take those students and have them the opportunity to.
Commissioner Irvin, I'd like to suggest that you agendize that with city council and get more press on that. What you're doing is awesome. And if it goes to city council, it'll get a lot of press. I know you're already in the paper, but I'm sure you can, you can get more press on this. Um, and I think the more press you get, the more it might inspire other kids and other people to help you. Okay, with that, I think we are officially adjourned. On an early evening, we all have time to have a normal dinners.
Good night all.
Hi, everyone.
The bike ride.
A, a big party?
Oh, when we go off, Laurie stay on.
Recording stopped.